With the government code of the state Texas, section 551.072C, City of Seymour intends to make its meetings accessible to all its citizens. If you have any of those zero eights, please go to the State Secretary of Commerce, 0893148. At least forty-eight hours of the minutes. The agenda is also posted on the city's website at cityofseaworth.org. With the following agenda, uh, particular city. Uh, we call the order. We're gonna do a, do the road call. Uh, Councilman Landwin.
Here.
Councilman Monty Glass.
Here.
Councilman Scott Henry. Uh, Council Lady Debbie Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Billy Hendes.
Here.
Okay. Uh, we've got the road call. Let's, uh, do our pledge of allegiance and then swing standing for the prayer. William Lynch, your good life, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I, I've asked Mr. Bobby Gohan to give him a prayer. Bobby is with here. He's from Seymour, graduated from Seymour High School, walking out of school together. He's a good guy, he's a gentleman. And, uh, there's just a lot of good things I can say about him, but, uh, he's gonna need some prayer tonight. Bobby, if you would, I don't know if you know about, uh, Mr. John Burke, but if you'll raise him, let's pay him a prayer, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight and I want to thank the Lord for bringing us all together. I'm gonna lift up the name of John Burke and his family and all his loved ones. They need our prayers, they need our help, and we know the one that can help them. So God, I'm just asking you to intervene on their behalf. Make your will be done, give them peace, guidance, whatever they need. You can do it. We're told to pray for the leaders of our country. And I'm asking you to be with each of these leaders of Seymour, Texas. I'm asking you to bless them, give them leadership, wisdom, knowledge, understanding. Bless them, all their families and loved ones, all the employees, to make Seymour a better place for everyone to live. I thank you for them and for everything that they do for all of us. And I just pray that your will be done and their decision made for everyone involved in it. It's in Jesus' name, I always pray for the name of the government, amen.
Amen. Thanks Bobby. Heard about that. Okay, uh, announcements. Mayor Proteam, Monty Glass, did you like the announcement today?
Uh, the only thing I got is I wanna appreciate the whole city and all, uh, working very good together. And especially the electrical department, that electricity back in another night, Coach Bass and Murray. Uh, I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Glass, you kinda stole my thunder there, but that's exactly, I had a, uh, business over here in town, it, uh, fire went off for a short period of time. I didn't realize that they had some freezers and refrigeration equipment going on. Real concerned about it. You know who called, I said, well, they're out, I'll send them out. And, uh, but you know, gave me the number to call. And it was only a very short period of time, he asked me to express to the, uh, electrical department, the entire city of Seymour staff, how much he appreciated them, uh, getting it taken care of. He didn't lose anything, so he was very, very happy. Uh, any other council people who'd like to say anything, did more, I'll jump in. Uh, okay, uh, city administrator, Dr. Jim Brager, would you like to do some recognition?
We have no recognitions tonight, instead we're recognizing the new, uh, really liked, uh, city council members.
Very good. Uh, we've got citizens' comments at this time. Do we, I don't know if we have anybody in the presence of the seat. Okay. All right. So we can move on to, uh, the agendas of possible candidacy and the election, as we know. Uh, there was no election, uh, the, uh, present city councillors or city council people. Uh, we're gonna re swear these people in just a minute or two. So let's do this, uh, I don't think I've ever done this before, we're gonna get it done. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and do this one at a time and, uh, we're gonna start with Councilman Landwin. And, uh, Councilman Wind will just stand up here and, uh, are you, I'm just gonna, when I say aye, state your name, I'll read it, and if you agree with it, you say aye, aye, or aye, will. Okay.
I'll stand and end up.
Okay. Raise your hand. No, not yet. Uh, aye.
Landwin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I have, uh, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money to a thing of value or promised to any public office or form, for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Thank you, Land, we got one more. And it's kinda the same, raise your hand. Aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the city council place and the state of Texas and will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Raise your hand. Yeah. You got that? Next up, we're going by Councilor. Debbie Gillespie. Raise your hand. Aye.
Debbie Gillespie.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or form, promised to any public office or form, for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Okay, that one. Very good. Aye.
Aye, Debbie Gillespie.
Very good. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the city council place and the state of Texas and will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Billy, if you raise your hand, you already have. Aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or promised to any public office or form for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the city council place by the state of Texas and will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Okay, um, then our office of presentation, city administrator reports. If you'd like to convince with that, Dr. Brager.
Yes, sir. Uh, of course, in your packets, uh, we'll report updates and, uh, I'd sort of make sure that y'all are aware of them. Specifically, you come up on G29, it's our kids' issue tournament from nine to ten AM. Uh, Voice Productions is going to donate $200,000. Uh, for that event, for awards, issue bowls. And so I'd love to have some council members and, uh, they're there to just, uh, support and, uh, be part of this wonderful event, very successful last year. And then also on Saturday, the third, the twenty-fifth, it's our golf camp there, softball recreational competition, nine to twelve P M each day. Voice Productions also donated $200,000 for that event plus. And to heat the event on that Thursday, we're going to cook a hot dog, hammer, cream, drinks and chips, uh, for everyone. So again, it's always wonderful with the council and everybody, even if you can't, uh, teach them golf, at least you can just be there to support and, uh, just, uh, shake your hands. And then, uh, of course, when our big day, our city pool opens up, uh, actually, you know, yeah, so May 25th. And so, uh, we do have a great group of lifeguards, many of those lifeguards are retired this year. They just named a, um, lifeguard team leader and manager, Christian Sheldon. Our other team leader is probably Cardi Hill. And then we have two assistant team leaders, Slade Homs and Roddy Alplatt. And so, uh, I think these are outstanding, like, I mean, they're, they're supposed to lead this road job this summer. And so we also love to power our mayor, uh, kind of on that very first day. And we're going to, uh, have a, a mayor contest. I'm not really, it's gonna be, uh, just to, uh, take that first dive in, to kick off a new year, but it'd also be great to have our council there, uh, as well. So we live to see y'all and support us on these very memorial, uh, times. Also, also, Richard Hill Award, uh, financially, it looks like, uh, through April. Uh, we're still running a flag, and we got some odd weather, so we'll probably pull back from the rains, uh, just a little bit. And we're still performing very, very well. And, uh, of course, our staff and ladies and gentlemen, of course, we're very sad about John Burke and, uh, we'll continue to pray for him. That's all I have, unless y'all have any questions for me.
I don't have any questions, but I, I did want to recognize Officer Justice Jones this year. Thank you for being here, it's always good to see you. We've got, uh, let's just move on, we've got, uh, public hearings, we've got a number of those. Uh, they were, uh, yeah, we, I think we, it's, we, that's it. Uh, number one, first public hearing is in regard to a rezonance request. Some of the changes, uh, one of them, seven west corner, also known as blocks one through six, block seven, north east. Seymour, Texas, from an R1 residential to a D2 commercial. And I might ask a quick question on that, is that a complete rezonance? Okay, that's changing here from R to D.
We officially started as a this. It was started as a specific use permit, and when the application came back, we decided to cover it.
All right, this is the first, uh, reading of this. Uh, it's, I made some notes on this, I'm getting used to this tablet. Anyway, if you, it's on page seven, if y'all wanna scroll through or file. Third, page three is what I want.
We have applications on page three.
Uh, that's it. This, uh, we don't discuss this later, do we? This is just the first reading.
Yes, there's no action on this, so if you wanna talk about it in the camera, it's, you know, it's just the first republic hearing.
I bet you. Any questions from anybody? We can save those till next month, whatever you want to. Uh, if not, number two, public hearing is regards to the proposed ordinance. Uh, well, let's see. Uh, we might jump to eighteen, or, yeah.
Doesn't it have a public hearing, but we have the action?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Gotcha.
I got you.
Uh, yeah, this is just the first reading. Public hearing is in regards to the proposed ordinance number twenty-two four dash zero two. Softcore recreational conflict rules, uh, considering some changes on that, so we'll get into that a little more later. Uh, number three, that's on page sixty-nine, it's where I found that. Uh, number three, public hearing is in regards to the proposed ordinance number twenty-two four dash zero three. Infrastructure answer fee orders. And, uh, that's the page seventy-three, seventy-four, it's where I found that. But, uh, that's two, kinda streamlined that with the, uh, Dr. Brager.
It's just a clarification of fee that's already been in action for eleven years. There just wasn't very good clarification about how we could use the money and, um, things of that nature. So it's no additional parts to the public, it's just business office clarification.
Clarification, okay. That's what I should do. Uh, number four, public hearing is in regards to the proposed ordinance, number twenty-two four dash zero four, field, zero four, landfill, hours of operation, that's page eighty-four, eighty-five. Uh, appreciate how, uh, Lauren highlighted that in yellow, you find the yellow on there. The whole ordinance is in there, but we're, we're just dealing with the yellow question that she highlighted. Uh, page eighty-four, eighty-five, and that, uh, we're trying to, we gotta be specific on what the hours are of operation. If we're trying to get that nailed in. Number five, public hearing is in regards to the proposed ordinance twenty-two four dash zero five. Dog pound fees for repeated vendors, that's page ninety-four, ninety-five. Uh, I think that's, if, if, yeah, certain numbers are brief opinions, so to speak, uh, pretty often. If you have a piece of that possibly. Uh, okay, Dr. Brager, where's the consent agenda? I can read that, if you go over that, Larry would do.
Uh, there really is no need, because the, uh, council has any questions concerning the lifeguard, you think all this is a agenda, but, uh, I would just recommend that the council all approve that as soon as it gets out.
Might make one comment on number nine, copy of the agreement, which I know was just been signed by the county and by Hospital, it's on page fifty-four. And, uh, it kinda spells out how the, uh, as I'm reading, how the service works, conjunction with the, uh, other entities here to tell. Uh, okay, action items.
Mayor, I'm making a motion for you to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second. We've got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no, thank you, you're catching me. Catching me every week, I don't get it. Okay. Uh, any questions, comment on that? I guess we could accept all the comments. Action items, ten. Do we wanna go to eighteen on this first, like with the golf cart plan, and then go to the possible changes? Uh, just go in order.
Uh, I would go in order, would you mind just considering the golf cart purchase, bar three, rights? Okay, could we have a chance to discuss that? Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, this is, uh, the going order, page fifty-nine through fifty-six. Uh, the P S fourteen, maybe it's fifty-nine through sixty-six. And it's best considered to take action from a great professional services with J K Martin, with project well exemption. Am I reading that right?
That, that is correct, uh, and so, um, we put this on the agenda, because I think one of our priorities is to make sure that we have plenty of water for our community today and for the future. And so we've kind of, uh, we have tested some of those wells there on the, uh, northeast part of town, by the transportation department, there's three wells there that we do an exceptional wells, but unfortunately they're not high enough to system. And so to make that happen, we're, uh, need the services of J K Martin, uh, to double this through the T C Q process, to make sure, including all legal requirements, to make that happen. So I did ask J K Martin, uh, for a budget, looking like that would cost, and so he saw the packet, the budget was over seven hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, I think that's, uh, uh, a very high budget. So I did take that budget and I sat down with, uh, with Sparky and, uh, a good look at it. He feels like that, um, that that cost is going to run closer to a thirty-five to two hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, so we do have, I believe, a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in the infrastructure, uh, bank account from that five dollar fee that y'all just, uh, permitted thirteen years ago. So we think that we have the money to make that happen, and it's gonna take a, a while to go through that process, finalize, plan it, tie it in. But, uh, before we proceed, I want the, uh, council to weigh in. One, do y'all wanna spend money on that? Uh, and two, make y'all's approval to, uh, open contract reject to Martin, so we can work with that, with that project.
Is, is this initially a ten thousand dollar charge, is that what I understand, that, uh, to do an initial assessment? I'm not talking about spending money to fix anything, work anything offline. But I'm thinking, uh, it was, it's gonna be a ten thousand dollar charge, which I, I mean, the regent, I get that, I'm not even complaining about that.
Yeah, that's gonna be, they're feeling it, depending on how much work they do, I think, for coastal projects, but, uh, so yeah, about ten thousand, specifically is related to the engineering department, I guess, there will be some of that, I get it. Because they will be doing a lot of our cars, develop the plan in, and then give them all the work, trying to this through through the T C Q. Uh, any other question, or is that your question, or?
Yeah, yeah, so we're not, we're not authorizing a full-scale project to do, because we don't have a plan.
Thank you. Right.
Correct.
Well, actually, I think you are, because once y'all approve this, that we're gonna quit with J K Martin, then we will start that process. But we gotta get them on one first, the old additional testing of the old T C Q process, wherever they're gonna actually purchase equipment, but we haven't taken into the plan, but really, well, it's really many challenges, but if that's approved by T C Q, takes time and money and the expertise of J K Martin to make all that happen.
They're, they're gonna look, if you show out, they're gonna look at this, give us a number, they think it's gonna cost to do all this.
Well, that's right, they don't have any package, I mean, she's gonna give a two hundred and ten, but, but it's highly inflated.
Yeah.
But, you know, Sparky looks upon this, but the majority doesn't work. And so, you know, he letting me know a lot of those things, if I'm unnecessary, they can do, and that's why he feels like it's gonna be more like a hundred eighty-five, two hundred thousand dollars. So we're, we're not giving them a line of change. So you're saying seven hundred thousand dollars? Well, that, because we can't, can't afford that, yeah, we'd have to, you know, make some other alternative financials to do it, to spend that kind of money, so. But I thought I'd make sure the council wants us to commit to this project, long as we can spike within that two hundred thousand dollar budget limit.
Which we've got.
Yes, I think we can handle the two hundred thousand, okay.
Okay.
But it's all time, again, getting those three additional wells, that, that is two or three hundred dollars a piece would really, uh, take us a long ways and be one hundred percent, you know.
Self-contained.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's kind of where I would be. Any discussions, council thoughts? Inside, suggestions? I mean, if, if we ended up with a number way higher than that, we would have a chance to say no, I guess, is that right?
Yeah, we could pull the plug on that, yeah, if you could.
But personally, I don't have a problem, you know. We've gotta figure out some way, I mean, we're not in the drought like we was years ago and that kind of thing. A lot of other things going on with our waters, but I would just like to be independent and in good shape. It, it's something that's gonna be, maybe twenty years from now. But as a council or as a mayor, I'd like to feel like, uh, in Wilson, to prepare for town for something like that, we would be taken care of, we wouldn't be left stranded, so that's kinda my thought.
Mayor, I'm making a motion that we, uh, do the agreement with professional services of J K Martin for this oil service.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
A second, a motion.
Second, of your council. Uh, Debbie. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? It's a black sign, it's five two. Excuse me, four zero. Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, number eleven, uh, it's best considered to take action allowing for storage building for the tanker commerce. And we have some timber commerce laws here. Mr. Bobby Moore. Kathy.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, Bobby Moore, I know the vice president at the Seymour Tanker College, this is Paul Brown, he's our technical director. Uh, the chamber would like to propose a eight-point storage container, uh, placed on the east side of the tanker building. And of course, that would be planned to, as, make it more aesthetic. Uh, Dr. Dr. Brager, there, ready to go, and we, this handout that I have prepared for you has adjusted the piece for the building. And after talking to Dr. Brager, we propose to move it over to the east side of the, uh, maintenance building there, the city has, the park. That's what, uh, that's what we're looking for, and they would need for us to keep our stuff in this, uh, currently at the, uh, maintenance building.
The fact you got it in five, three different classes. You have a lot of different classes to get all our stuff out of.
Okay. What would you typically put in there, uh, lights or this type of stuff?
Everything, we've got, um, we've got sound systems, we've got tables and chairs that we may end up having to move there at some point in time. But we, um, we have, uh, boxes and, you know, stuff, you know, that, that we've got stuck in there. You know, like, uh, stuff in the sea, uh, fire building thing, and literally, we, we're gonna need to put that Christmas stuff. We have, uh, all the Christmas stuff for Santa, we did, all the different things, there's quite a lot of trees and all that, and, uh, we, we really, um, set up a place, and it's extremely better than before, we imagine, if it appeared. So we would just like a place where we could keep all the rest in one spot. And that, you know, not just pull up a flood dam from the back, but right here, we've got closet full, we've got bathroom that we've got set up and, and stuff like that, so.
What, what size is the container, do you know?
We're looking at an eight by twenty, and, you know, these things are also, uh, seals, what we, we dust and the bugs and stuff in there.
If you keep, uh, roads and probably insects and a lot of rats.
We're planning to treat many of those that work with the community, we're wanting to keep probably possibly the murals in Seymour, kind of how much on it, just make it look, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make anything look bad, you know.
That, you know, city bar, state, so that's pretty, pretty important. Anything else you'd like to add, or, uh, council, if you'd like to ask a question, or, uh, thank you very much.
Don't forget to go and show it to your person.
Do we, uh, have any public comments, anybody like to weigh in on that? None?
Mayor, I'm making a motion that we, uh, approve storage container, tanker commerce, store, uh, stuff in.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, permit this, and we have a second.
Yeah, a second.
And Councilman Landwin, second, it's all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Okay. Next action out. The well, it's best considered to take action allowing for creation of a tourism route housing in the city government, but only with the purpose of funding through. but only with the purpose of funding through hotel occupancy tax, but not with this, which has some information.
Okay, so I'm going to have council people that are interested in serving on a tourism committee, not the lady of the board, a tourism committee that is non-partial in the sense that the Chamber needs to promote chamber businesses, that's the point of the Chamber, right? And really to support the Chamber for people to have businesses, but they should not support all businesses without the ownership of that. And that is contradictory to the Chamber. And so, but we have tourism type things that need to happen, but it's difficult to decide exactly who that is. This group that I'm proposing is mainly a marketing group, that's it. They're not going to hold events, they're not promoting anyone business or anything other than hotels. So we've got them under the hotel occupancy tax. But the point of this organization is to spread the responsibility of a year's work of marketing between twelve committee members. But they are tasked to market during that month to get people to come to see more and enjoy our events and our businesses and what have you. The other side of that committee would also be creative problem solving for murals and other standout things that would draw attention to our community as you drive through or waiting come. This could be statuary, murals, a van, anything like that could be purchased by applying for virtual occupancy funds. And then, so it would fall under her prevent and advertising and things like that. I'm asking for the city to umbrella this so that I can monitor the funds through economic development. We would receive those funds into the city, that expenditure would be made for that tourism group. So that they don't have to have, at this point, a board created, secretary and treasurer and all of that. If it becomes so wildly popular and prior to the point where the city doesn't need to umbrella anymore, and they need to go get an E I N number and start their own organization, great. But at this point, we're just not doing the community any service by, not by not marketing now in a tourism type fashion. This is come to our hotels, come to our national museum, go hunting, go fishing. It's very broad.
Playa.
Playa. In other committees, they call this destination marketing. Actually, when I first started at Comic Field, I went to D M O classes with the Texas Travel Association. And it's really fantastic, if you have the time to commit to it. In my current position, I do not have the time to commit to it. But I have spoken with some people that you might not even think about, that they have ties to people in other states. Other, they just know other people, it's not the same well that we keep dropping our content into, you know? And we, it's going to be a little progressive. So I am going to ask you that you don't necessarily require okay our purchases, because this board of twelve people, the whole point of adding all those people on here is to make sure that we're thinking creatively of problem solving. You already have control over the people you put on the hotel occupancy board. So you have a way to check the balance of the city to ensure that we're not being crazy and just blowing money, because that board has to approve whatever we request. First, I have to ask those people to serve. And so that's what I'm asking you all of you, is support the creation of this committee, understanding that we are going to apply our hotel occupancy events, the record on development and that process.
Let me just throw this in there quick, but I know in the past anyway, I saw a pot, there's always more money than is spent. Am I, would I be correct on that? I mean, there's always seemed like there was, there was a surplus.
We do have a surplus currently. The way we work now that we didn't work years previous is that we haven't had a good working rate every year. We set that budget at sixty-five thousand dollars, which is what we're going to make. But there is a surplus of about nine thousand dollars from years previous that didn't set a budget. So I have spoken with the pot holder, and their suggestion is for us to set our budget at our total account balance, nine hundred thousand dollars. However, there's different rules for how things can happen. So you can only spend fifteen percent of your budget on promotion of the arts. So my budget is fifty-five thousand dollars, and if my fifteen percent is like not to break. If I meet my budget requirements that have money over here, the board, and I wouldn't say, no one has told us, no, you can't do that. It's kind of, we, we ask questions, if they don't tell us no, the kind of means you can't, hotel occupancy is fine. So if we exceed, we meet our budget, then we can pop over here to this nine thousand dollars and say, okay, we've already met the fifteen percent. If we want to spend twenty thousand dollars of this towards promotional arts, we're in the right of reporting our stuff back to the state. We're not reporting incorrectly. So it's the worst choice, and when we set that budget again in October, whether or not they're going to set it at our estimated budget or if they set it at our current balance.
As long as, my conservative nature is like, no budget, everything you got, you know, I mean, just, it seems like it's enough money for what people want. And that's what encourages me about this twelve person group, you know, that there is money in that.
I don't really want to be taken away from any of that. And the whole idea of it too is that it's so great and works so well that we generate way more hotel occupancy money, because we want people that come here and stay at our hotel in their area of ease, that's what comes up with the occupancy. So we need to give people my tanneries, come stay with us, go to the museum, go over here, go do this, stay over here. We get up in the morning, go over here, 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 so they aren't doing an open up staying. Now that could very well look like a partnership with the Chamber to encourage pyramid verse to offer things we don't have that we need to fill in those blanks. So there's going to be a lot of partnerships, and I will ask Kathy to sit on that board, we need to have the Chamber's input. But it, I don't believe them to feel the sole responsibility of it on themselves, because they've got, you know, the blood and the mouth. But if we started in June, and whoever June is, your main focus is that you're going to market the tar out of our rodeo. You're going to talk about how many nights we have music, you're going to put all the social media posts up, you're going to create a campaign, you're going to call the radio stations, you're going to call whoever you're, and you're going to work very closely with the rodeo association, make sure that you're good, that you're good. And it's, it's a work, but it's just an assistance to the rodeo association, they've been the best, most amazing thing ever. So it, it just can't always fall on one, or, y'all know, when you start one, it's, you start fifteen times, they just start knocking at your door. So everybody on that rodeo association, they start on three or four rewards too. So we, we need to.
I know, we can choose which organizations and board.
As far as events, no? It'd be events, we don't, we just need people to come and count. And there was even a lot, I was in the, anyways, there was a Savannah, Georgia. They were doing even like small painting classes or a sippin' dance or a molly's hanging out. So if modern state says that they're going to have molly's and mimosas at, if we're going to make that an event, we're going to tell her party, you want to come here. They might not be in overnight event, but it's still an activity again. So, right, you watch the museum, watch the park, like here, you spend the night, and maybe go to molly's and mimosas the next day. It's organized. I don't know, but I guess if there was an ethical morality question, I think the whole board would probably recognize that, and we would have to have a discussion about. I mean, if we had news calling one-on-one, show up, you know, we would have to decide whether or not. Are they going to, are they going to, are they going to get a ticket or a ticket?
Well, if the council proves that, would they get a seat? Council, one motivation to do that, discriminating against another group.
I, I would think more than rightfully, though, I think that if it's a community event, I would say that that it's open to the community. If it was something that was.
Community standard would kick in at some point, you would think, it's, it's like, well, do we want to have, you know, some weird religious cult or something? Say, devolution or something, we don't want that kind of thing.
We could definitely give the city maybe a code of ethics or a parameters, something like that. I think it'd be good to get every organization to pay partner with that. If we get someone from the rodeo committee that wants to sit on this board, they need to know what our ethics and rules are going to be as well. Um, I think that's a good question.
And you're, this group is not doing the things, is it?
No, we're not doing it.
It's just pumping up whatever.
We're just supporting, we're telling everybody, if you want to come here, if you want to eat here, if you want to stay in here, heck, you're not going to live here, you know?
I'll ask one question, we'll ask if there's any comments, and then we'll see if there's a motion. Uh, this like, if things just kind of went south, it's under the city umbrella, we could close this, I mean, we could.
So if it went south, and it's, so the only thing that, I would say it went south when we just stopped doing it, you know what I mean? I can, the only way we can see it going bad is if, if does, if someone doesn't feed your dog, and first two or three months, you all carry and make anybody advertise.
You just go for the one, pick the one.
Exactly. Well, there, what we essentially would do is make an application to HOPOR, and we'd say, we need three hundred dollars, because we're going to do a hundred dollars for Facebook advertising for the rodeo association or our city park and staying at our hotels in Arizona Beach. And so we need three hundred dollars, we're going to market this, make a payment, and be done with it.
Any comments from the visitors? Or, or council? Did someone want to make a motion?
And I'll say to you, I don't want to come into y'all with my twelve, you know what I mean? We're like, this is us, we, we need to introduce everybody, they don't like anyone. So if I get twelve people, and come in, y'all be like, this is our field, this is our board, or our committee, that, and we've committed to try this, even, just try for six months, just for the rest of twenty twenty-three, or twenty-four, whatever you're going to do. And just try to make it happen and see what we can get out of it.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, we'll go to the, uh, allow the creation of a tourism group.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Record that.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yes, very good. Okay, number thirteen. It's best consider to take action under, uh, action ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two, software recreational complex rules and fees. That's page sixty-nine on my tablet.
Do you want to jump down and do eighteen before you do thirteen?
We can do that.
If you're going to do.
If we can figure out what our costs are going to be there, but let's do that. We're going to go, we're going to skip thirteen, come back, then we're going to go with eighteen. Uh, that is page one oh nine through one twenty-five, so we just go to one oh nine and take here, right? I think that's a yellow two, but.
And you also have a golf cart that didn't go to that email after that.
Got that. It's best to consider to take action purchasing or leasing golf carts. If we get to. Okay. We kind of keep this around. We've got various options, we've got some golf cart, did some raging pricing. I didn't calculate it way more than I like to do. The second, then to try to figure out kind of what I was looking at and all of that. Anybody want to start this off, got an opinion on this, or what about lease versus buy? We, I would go buy, so that way we can get into that buy, we've got some. I was kind of suspecting that at first, but I think there's something to that. You know, whatever number you end up buying at the end of, let's say, five year term. Let's say you got, let's just say about twenty or fifteen or ten, half of them are probably going to be okay. Yes, the other half, you can sell, get something, you know, and continue to build a point, you know. So anyway, I, that, that was, I'm kind of leaving that way myself, but. I would did. And like I said, this is just my way I went for it. And I ended up at Club Car, I ended up at Yon, and I just, the other one, I know there's nothing wrong with Easy Go. I had Easy Go one time. But I'm going to be honest with you. Okay.
Talking to that guy that made you go to the phone that night, did not make a very big. He's kind of coming away with it. I just be point blank.
That's, that's valid, and like I said, I, I probably could dig that away to be okay with any of them, but the, the calculation that I made, and this may be not a good way to calculate, I don't know. But the, on a club car purchase, I calculated the interest rate at seven and a half percent. Is that in the ballpark? Well, I've been talking to people's banking names, and since they were using the borrowing, I think that's where our CD is. And I think I put that somewhere, but it was a pretty good rate.
Close to seven, it's sixty point.
About six hundred percent. Yeah, six point nine, yeah, I was supposed to say that. Anyway, I didn't know, and this was a lovely thought, I don't know if these companies have financing, you know, the business, the finance, you know.
They live in this walk, this is the worst.
Is it?
Yeah, I think our best deal would be go with.
We might buy it.
Yes.
Well, I did these calculations at seven and a half, so, but it's still kind of, it's the same. Twenty cars, sixty-six hundred dollars a piece. That's a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. And I, like I said, I calculated too high, at seven and a half. That over the life of five year term, that's a hundred fifty-eight seven is what I came up with. The lease is way less than that, or a hundred and ten, but you don't end up, you know, that's, that's the issue there. Yama, and I just figured fifteen, so it's, you know, it's going to be awful. Well, I take that, I figured, oh, well, twenty cars at sixty-one hundred dollars a piece is a hundred twenty-two thousand. Over the term, I figured a hundred forty-four thousand, that's, if you just pay out sixty months. But, you know, on your monthly payment of about twenty-five hundred dollars or so. Anyway, that, that's where I, to me, you know, we're going twenty cars, we're going fifteen, we're going ten, you know, and then pick a number. But.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so this golf cart, how many do we have, we have to take it out, right? Okay, so if you take, is any of them worth, I mean, when we have them out, they're not us, so what are they, those are going to be out?
Will they just pick them up at no charge, is that?
Well, that's what we talked about before, they'll pick them up, but my understanding was that Vegas, Vegas because of this scratch and that scratch, so, you know, they're paying, it costs this money, I mean, I can't guarantee that, I hope not. That was kind of the impression I was left with from talking to that Easy Go car.
It releases up, they, they back this hell of a finding, and they're going to do something. And they're going to charge us if we keep doing it.
Yes, way above.
Like buying it. It was pretty beating, right?
Pretty much.
So we're going to have to take them here and then put them over.
But I, I've been talking to the guy at Club Car, and that sixty-six hundred dollars has included in that price for Club Car to come and pick up these Easy Gills and take them back to Georgia. He said that's not a full truckload, but they can pick up other cars to get a full truckload and take them back for us, back to Easy Go, because Easy Go and Club Car is in Augusta, Georgia. Now, if, which, I was talking to somebody the other day, and either way, whether we let Club Car, if we go to Club Car, take our Easy Gills back, that's sixty-six hundred dollars, that price is included. If we tell them, no, we'll let Easy Go, then Easy Go's going to give us some money. So we got to pay money back.
So we gotta pay money back either way to get them back to Augusta, Georgia. Whether we pay Easy Go to come here and pick them up and run up to the ringers. And I was talking to Todd about this, and Todd said that, uh, there was, I believe it was a guy who knows that they don't want Easy Go and they go as far as if you don't have the oil filters that they recommend on it, the air filter that they recommend on it, the tire debt on the trail is not up to specs, then you get hit for that. I mean, even as minor as an oil filter that's probably 10 bucks, they may hit you for 50. And the tires, if you got one tire that is below their standard, you have to buy all four tires to make them all new and be in match and same age and all that.
Well, I agree with you, buy them. My favorite is, is are we gonna make the money extra to get the rock course to help? Hey, like, you know, we heard people talk about people that they're getting rock cars for free. Well, if you, you know, that's, are we gonna have a place up that you wear these people's golf gear without? Does that make sense? I'm, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I'm all for buying off, not having the lease to wear. But it's just, people are taking advantage of the golf course. Everybody always says, well, you know, we need money, we need money. Well, we've got all these people out there riding golf carts, going to get them. And I'm not blaming the idiot, but I'm just saying, you know, exactly, everybody would be in a hole on that, so we can get some, if we put some money on, they can stop us.
I see exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. I don't think we have a whole different promise.
I don't, well, yeah, that's number 13. But I don't think, I don't think you can keep, and this is a pretty harsh word. I don't think you can keep the theft of getting golf cart, playing golf and not paying the membership or paying for a golf cart to be 100% safe.
True.
I hate that, but.
That, that's, I think.
We, we, uh, I guess I can say something about that window we've got. We, we're looking at possibly with the window in the office, looking out towards those golf carts. So the people inside don't have to go out in the breeze where and look out the door to make sure that nobody's getting a cart. They'll see them through that window, and if we can afford that window, that's a different topic.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a safety measure to keep people out. Basically stealing the golf cart fees. And that's basically what it is, they're stealing from the city and the golf cart crew. But I, I see exactly what you're talking about, and I don't think you can stop that 100% of it.
But get back to your, sure, your Easy Go carts. If we get our best neighbors to make sure that oil filters, air filters, we got our power tank, cash, whatever, it's on the policy, whatever, like. I think it will be ready to get exchanged, living money, if they don't have it.
I think we could, I agree with you, man, if we spend a little bit of money, it, I think it saves a lot of money when they come and expect it, right?
Quick calculation, uh, like I said, I was figuring 20 club carts. It's, it's pretty close. 15 club carts, 99,000 cars, 15 Yamahas, 95. So I guess, you know, I'm not tied to even one of them. I guess my, my deal is, I've been sleeping, staying with a fairly substantial amount of money to do 15 or 20. I guess that's my, my main, uh, thought on the deal is, y'all golf, I mean, I used to golf. That's what they, that's what I, nobody else golfed, but, uh. So generally speaking, non tournament, and I don't think y'all way off in the weekends, the week goes forever. Generally are 15 cars. Are we out of cars a lot of times, or not at the present 15, would you say?
Uh, during, like, during big golf tournaments?
No, I know we're at, we're at, yeah, but without, without big, I missed it. A weekend, some June, July, August, September, there's not any. I go out there occasionally in my UBC cars and, you know.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to say one, you know? This weekend's supposed to be a beautiful weekend. You may have one on Saturday, Sunday you may have 10 of them still sitting in the car shed. You know, the following weekend, you may have, you may have them all rented out, hold every week, every day of weekend. You know, it's kind of hard to say, am I right, Jeff?
Yeah, I think it'll be hard this, and maybe a handful of days, tough a year, you may rent all of them. You know, I believe remember, but I've, I've never been out there and not had a golf cart and not played. At least possibly, you know, say, generally.
Well, that, and this is, this is just looking down the line, but so you do a five year financial scale of this, and I'm, I'm, I think that's ultimately, if we done that, we wouldn't be worried about what they're gonna need for all of this stuff. Get 15 good new cars. You know, if 10 of them are good, or eight of them, or nine of them are good in five years, about 15 of them. You know, if you've got your fleet, you can just start changing them. Y'all.
Got one.
One of them gets, or it's just, it's no good, sell it for something and, uh, by just, that way your fleet's improving itself. And, uh, I, I would just, and I'm basically just kind of just looking at these water projects. I was gonna do my foundation stuff, but I'm really just go full bore, tear this house, start with some of those haulings. We've got those containers due to that, but. So our resources, if we can just save a little bit out there, increase our fees a little bit. We're, we're basically, it's, it's just, it, it's even, you know? Yeah, we got this, the payment is higher, all that. But our fees, if we go with 20, we just keep counting, it's a little, I get out of my comfort, but I know my concern is. Oh, that's me.
Well, I was, I was, I was gaining 20, but, and I was also gaining 36 or 48 months. And that price, way. So I mean, we've paid 15 carts for the last five years, and I think we've done good with them. I, I don't, I, I'm just saying 20, just to help go to a fleet bigger. But like I've, I've talked to that guy from Club Cart several times. And he said any kind of golf course usually goes from 15 to 25 carts. And that's, they, you know, someone's got 15, someone's got 25. And I said, well, we've had 15 for whoever, I think, and he suggested, you know, go with 15 also. Unless we have the money, then they go with one.
Yeah, maybe, and, and you don't know, we're on, we won, we won. In four years, it's like, let's get rid of three things and buy five, you know, something like that. Anyway, anybody else, like I said, I'm coming, and y'all decide, I like it.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, encourage the council to reconsider again, you're a little longer, short, long term. And whatever you choose, the support, whatever y'all ask, just think about how we're gonna pay for those. And I really encourage y'all to consider increasing those fees for the golf players to pay for that, how y'all wanna do that, so that it doesn't come out of your own plan. Because we did have a lot of other goals that I think y'all want to accomplish. And, uh, and of course, to do that, we have, we want to maximize that, and I think that's where we needed to consider. And I do think that, you know, y'all, compare those three years, they're both affordable. Now, I'll tell you, if a Yamaha or a Club Cart, Easy Go's, the best half really can tell you, I know they're all living there. As much as you choose, you're going to be under warranty. I can speak for everyone, I think they all have service contracts, I think very based on the leadership at that time that's overseeing them, but I do think we work through that as well, so. That's all I think.
Okay.
I've had both, I've got a Club Cart now, I had a Yamaha, and either, either one of them, that's on the card.
I think that's what Jeff said, excuse me, about increasing the fees and stuff. Again, I think that is good, like, it should people are paying it, and I'm one of those, those golf, really, stuff like that. Not, you know, like, and I know that it's hard to pick people from doing that, because they're just like, as far as the money, uh.
Yeah, anybody who walks along, they pay that. And I don't want to talk about this, like, I really don't think, when a lot of big screen or big TV, the camera focused on those golf cart sheds. And that way, when no one's there, you can come on weekends, whatever, and they go report that video, look, and put a sign up, and this is good, we are for it, you know, make them know that if you take a cart, you will be lit, or you will be, you know, prosecuted, or you will ticketed, or whatever. Penalties the council wants to report with. And I think that would turn up a lot, yeah.
And also, uh, Todd and two Sean's are not out there all the time, they're out there working their period. Well, a lot of this, I'm gonna go again, golf cart theft is done a lot of time after they leave. Well, if, I don't have a problem with it, to going up to somebody and saying, hey, did you pay for their cart? If you're, you know, suspected of it, just ask them nicely, did y'all, did y'all go in and pay for their cart? Or whatever. And if not, say, well, you need to go break orders if you leave. You know, that's, that's a, let the membership take care of this, among the offloads. It's coming out of their pocket just as well as it is everybody else.
Right, and it re-spends a lot, because people aren't paying.
That's what they're paying for. Absolutely.
Is it not a year tag? Is it not, is it not a year tag? Or an address so bad?
Well, the guys we had had, it turned on, and nothing pulled here.
They put the audience shouting out some, some speak, at that point, technology, yeah, we, we, I'm calling it. Got you.
Yeah, like Billy said, these, the, you can just about spot these golf carts now with a screwdriver. But these new carts, and I believe the Yamaha, older Club Cart, and probably the Easy Go, I haven't really been on that. It's got some kind of a lock-in deal on it, on the key deal, it's, it's a special ignition or something. I know with Club Cart, they've got a special ignition or something that you've got to do before you can crank it up. And it's got to have that key in it.
And there was the, the warranties. It depends, drive training, it's two, three, four years, depending on what component the government of the golf, so there is evidence there, but. But anyway, uh, just anybody else want to weigh in? I, just because of the cost, and the fact that we can kind of build the fleet up at some point. Maybe even, you know, if you're three or four years, can get in good enough shape, but but right now, everything else is on it. I think, granted, golf carts are pretty, pretty cool. These tournaments, I loaned my cart out when I had my cart, numerous times. It might come in with a few parts missing, I didn't even care. They never told me, I think, why wouldn't you go stick on anymore? I wonder what happened? But we could find it, oh, well, but, uh, anyway, uh, the, the Yamaha's cheaper, it's a little cheaper, it's not hugely cheaper, but, uh, what do you think about 15? Anybody gonna do 15?
Are you okay with 15?
Okay. Okay, fine, I think he's okay, man, maybe he'll be, but. Okay, let's figure out what it brings. But, yeah, before we get into that, okay. Uh, let's go ahead, Pop Kim, you can go and make time, come on, love. I like that creature.
You get one, Marshall, you can hurt.
Is there a Marshall company?
Yes, sir.
I'm on the Donkey movie, I know who that guy is.
Um, Kimberly Stevenson, I just, I think it's great that you guys are gonna get these golf carts, so I thought it would please thank this, anything to save some money, even though it costs money, you know, short term, long run. Like you guys said, it's gonna be where they can't actually just take them. Uh, as a community member, I would make a suggestion that, I know people take their own golf carts out there, maybe you guys could issue a tag so that you know that those are personal golf carts. And then also, when they go inside before you get in the window, maybe there's a special tag that they can hang on, the lease golf cart. So we know this person went inside, got it, they can actually put the tag, bring it out, and have to show it. If they don't, then we know which ones are borrowed or whatever, that's the question.
Uh, this will be a work in progress, we might use that.
Well, the fleet does have a number of them.
Yeah, yeah. There will be struggles, there's things you may have, but we're gonna work with them.
Yes, it's easy to get.
I'll take you.
And you have to have a tag, because I pay for it. So if you're driving around and someone doesn't have their tag.
Oh, pay for it, yeah.
If I say case, like, um, like I said, isolation, spot in there. Almost like, almost like a tag for the car.
I see what you're saying.
It might work, and then also, you guys might want to have a pull there, throw a chain on the padlock, and I have to exactly need to be tucked along the padlock. It's that simple, it's cheap.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I just want to lead members to get the carts.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, that's included, but they're.
But that little tag thing would, would help you guys a lot.
Thank you, that's good. All right, anybody want to make a motion on it?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go with the capital purchase apparatus people's paying on the 15 Yamaha golf carts.
Okay, got a motion, anybody second that?
I'll say that.
You got a second, I will play and say aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Good discussion. I want to write one, I knew what's coming. Okay, that needs to be right here. I think we're on number 13. That is paying 69. Discuss consider take action ordinance number 2024-02, that's due to soft court recreational conflict rules and fees. It's pay 69. You okay, Danny?
Yes.
Okay. The, the thing I noticed, and Laura might point out something different, we're talking about shed rooms going from $10 to $20 a month. Cart tag fee of $5.
Well, that was really, that was all that we were talking about, and this is from our supervisor, Mr. Andrew, and said we've got to increase those golf cart fees and over that, add it to, I think, $10 to $10. And so that's why I was suggesting 20. Golf, golf cart path fee would be something ridiculous. But we have to, because, uh, Mr. Andrew, in his previous, in his time, every time it rains, that little car pass out, and again, we know, the golf course does look amazing, and I think what maybe separates our golf course from any country look is the car cast, you know? Dirt, and they try hard to maintain those, but, uh, you can't just go out there and just lay those all time, get help, moisture, you know? And just a lot of very little to implement. So the whole idea was, if the council would consider any $5 a month golf cart fee, we could create a fund, then when we have enough money, maybe we could go, we could concrete $30, $50, learn how this money we have. And if we did that, it's after three, four, five, maybe 10 years, we'd have all our paths paid. And then really, that would take it to a whole other level, so.
So that, that, you know, something that's happened, it would go on the membership, that, that's just something, when you get your bill for your membership, it would be included in the bill.
That'd be three dollars, I'm sorry. We talked about having $5 added to, they love all the actual, um, sheds, or any sheds. Because we've got another car pass, we're 61,000, renting a city golf cart and paying them that $5, you know, so that could be a little tricky there. But I do want to mention on the $10 though, we've been a bit, that went out the white color, I think, really about $3,000 on the shore.
On the car shore.
On the cart shed, if you make that payment so much. I think I think the speakers here, they're probably considered, so you might, you might want to put a piece somewhere else.
Gotcha.
What about government car rentals?
Yeah, yes, there you go.
What about, uh, if we do the cart bed, then what about charging people that drive the golf carts out there? Then our members would rent them out, on the shed, if they need to buy a lot of government car. Or anybody else?
Yeah, to me, anybody using the cart beds. I know there's no chance of driving, it's like, I mean, you can pay a hobby, doesn't it? No, it's all get, buy gas, and if I have gas, I have to pay for.
So, so if you don't tax it?
For power, I'm sorry.
I didn't interrupt you, David.
No, it's just a great feature, I mean, that's good, that's a good argument, that anybody using the cart pass should pay a venue, unless you're renting an actual city golf cart.
So, but, well, let's just say, you, you've got a cart shed, you're gonna pay twenty dollars a month. Versus trying to rent your golf cart out here. You would go to the clubhouse, play five clubs each time. That's not terrible, I mean.
That, to me, is gonna be difficult. So as a member, I've already paid my fifty-five, sixty-five dollars a month to go play. I just drive my truck and my golf cart over there, and I get out and I go play because I'm a member and I'll pay rent. Now I can go to the clubhouse and get five cups around, and I think you're gonna have a harder time with that. Unless you include it on your membership, a cart fee, you'd have to, then. Your shed rentals, you have to be a member to have a shed, you cannot rent a shed without a membership. So, those would be separate, is what I'm saying, so if you're paying sixty-five for your membership. You're gonna pay five dollars for a cart fee, and is that monthly? So we're just gonna add it to the monthly, well, everybody else that comes, that pays daily, they're gonna pay five dollars every single time they play. So it's just, it's hard to make.
Golf, they're running on a golf cart.
Right, but if I'm a member, I pay five once, if I'm not a member, then I pay five every time I come.
Then member up.
And that's fine, I'm just trying to make it consistent, you know, I keep making consistent, so, and that can be the answer. Member up and save money, don't pay cart fees every time you come, just once a month.
Well, that's no different than buying bulk bread, you buy bulk bread as cheap as buying one bowl, in the, in the end. I'll be happy to pay twenty dollars for a cart shed, just, I've paid a cart shed out there for the last five, six years, making that a part of it. Now, I'm a part of it, I'm a part of this, it's all been more than a part of it.
I'm just trying to understand how you can be a member.
Yeah, well, that's really giving us some options, but I, I do want to be honest with you, that some of our members may, uh, complain about that. But if you're gonna have a quality product, which we do, I think you have to pay for a quality product. Now, if you want a, an average product, I played, I played on my bottom, and I actually played one, several courses, uh, some of our neighbors, member. And I didn't think your golf cart would be prepared to ours. So, I guess if you want to pay less and get a less product, then you can go there, but, you know, our current course, we, we do a lot of money, and the quality job, it's a great golf course. I think five, probably best nine golf courses is in a hundred fifty mile radius, if not more. I think you have, maybe you have to understand, it's quite costly a little bit more. If they don't pay more, then we can lower our standards, we can, you know, pursue the minority, and then they can pay less.
Well, go to those members that's, that's going to ground and complain about it, when we get a cart bed done and see if they're driving that.
Well, and it's, 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 you know, I hear, I hear from golfers, I hear from non-golfers, you know, and I get, I get both sides of it, and, uh. You know, and, you know, we, we run really bad debts about it.
I think, I think go through and comment that five dollars and go, if you're playing, like, trying to fix the cart beds, somebody has to pay them.
And they not know, and, and, um.
Oh, it's a long run, it's, it's a lot of, your cars are.
That's a good point.
So that pays. Paying, like, a daily game, and I'm not a golfer, so I'm just doing this for info, to, to pay your rent fee, do your cart path and your cart rentals forty dollars. For a day, is that, I mean, I don't know.
I think that's pretty cool, you know.
How, how's that broken down?
Twenty-five dollars for your rent fee.
Right.
Five dollars for your cart path, fifteen cart rent, and fifteen, do the rent.
No, no, if you rent a car, you don't pay the cart.
Right, no, no, you don't pay the cart path.
Only if you bring your golf cart. A personal, personal golf cart, if you rent a city golf cart, then you do not pay the five dollars extra.
Okay, then, how do we make sure we have those people with their personal carts paying non-members? Non-members, how do we make sure they pay their five dollars?
Well, if, if they don't get a cart bed, versus if you have your personal cart, so you've got to pay five dollars.
But they're not gonna.
They'll have to come in, they'll go to their.
Yeah, they're gonna play, they can come in and play the group.
Okay, I see what you're saying, non-members with a cart have to pay rent fee.
And, and the five dollars.
And the five dollars.
Now, as far as the members that have golf carts that drive another, or that shed, that one, you know.
Okay, so cart rental, no, no.
Are, 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 are we gonna impose these tonight, we're just talking about?
Oh, that's, we're gonna, okay, just tell them the thing, just, what you have to do, the thing. Okay.
You're passing tonight, you're going to bed.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I mean, whatever day you say, uh, we don't have, then you.
Do you move to July first?
July first, thank you.
What I want to do, thanks, July first?
Well, your membership would, but.
But would you put the cart bags?
That other stuff can happen immediately, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other, we see any other tweaks that, uh. Golf course running seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, is that enough?
Thank you for that.
That, when they have the term of display, they need seven hundred and fifty per day. That's fifty hundred dollars for, for two days.
So you're not going up on your cart now? Or are you going up, because we still have to make two thousand dollars.
Right, right now, then how much? I would not go to twenty dollars. And, and, like I say, I talk of some of these golfers. It, you know. At some point, it feels like it's smart, I know we, but it's a good idea.
Well, people, people need to understand that fifteen dollar cart fee is for five-year old golf carts, or if it's a twenty, twenty-four golf carts. Five hundred dollars, they're not gonna grant you. If it does, you know, I mean.
Five-year-old cart?
So. We're talking shed rental increased ten dollars.
What's not in this, is that cart rental?
The twenty?
If you pass this twenty, twenty-four, or two, the way it's written, it does not have the cart rentals, it's twenty, it hasn't a fifty. So we would need to make sure in your motion, if you want to increase, that you add that in there. There's also the addition of the driving range, dollar roundings, we didn't have that built in, so that's in there next to it. And then section three, golf cart shed rentals, is the rules for the shed rentals, we didn't have that built in to the original ordinance.
It kind of explains how, they take, you know, they drop their membership, they've got ten days, that happens.
Yes, that way we can put some value in that shed.
All right. Anything else? Somebody like to construct and propose it?
Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-four, dash zero three. Softwood recreational complex rules and fees with the change of cart rentals from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars. And everything else on that resolution should stay the same.
Shed rentals, twenty? Uh, yes, it's okay.
It is in there.
Effective immediately.
Yeah, the only thing will be that these memberships can't start until two, two offers, but it, it's comporte.
So all the damage can go with it, huh? Okay. Anything else? Laura, did you get that? Is that clear enough? Anybody else? Anything else?
Counselor did a very job.
All right, uh, got a motion, what about a second?
A second.
Second, councilwoman, let's see, all the players say aye?
Aye.
All opposed the same, four, six. Okay, let's move on. You just seem longer, what that one. Number fourteen, discuss, consider, take action, ordinance number twenty, twenty-four, dash zero three. Infrastructure enhancement fee ordinance based, that's seventy-three, seventy-four is what I've got. And I think this is to kind of clean this up, is that right?
I guess that's correct, remember, two, thirteen, they passed a, a motion that we needed to, to get that passed in the form of the workers, to make it clear for our owners and for us, and they're always done, we need it correct.
They come in, our, we've, we've got something to point to that allows us to spend money. Okay. We are okay with that, like, discuss it, make a motion, and that five, that five dollars is to take care of the water tower.
Is that correct? Water tower and the stand pipe.
And the stand pipe, to, to help keep the, help us keep the maintenance on it.
Right.
Gotcha.
To be clear, and we draw last year, so it was, maybe two years ago, in the case, it's only about two dollars of that five, but another three is what we're gonna utilize for this in the web project.
Gotcha.
Anything else that the council chooses to give?
I think, I think that's why that was, was because of the water.
It was.
Section three, fee of that ordinance, says how we will spend those things, for all infrastructure? So it could be for street repairs, like when we have the big giant hole for water? Or upgrade things, it's, it's all infrastructure, all of it, so it's not regulated to just sandblasts and the water tower.
It's, it's not the purchase of golf carts?
No, it is for those four things out there.
Correct. Other things, non-interstruction things, uh, okay. All right.
I make a motion to approve that ordinance number twenty, twenty-four, dash zero three.
Okay, we have a motion, yeah, what about a second?
I'll say it.
Got a second, councilwoman Hendrick, all the players, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed the same, four, six. Discuss, consider, take action, ordinance number twenty, twenty-four, dash zero four, landfill hours of operation. I've got that on page eighty-four, eighty-five, and. We have to be clear on that, is that right, I've read here on the hours of operation, I think mine is right, yes, that was, yes, just to make that clear. I see the yellow, transfer station hours, holidays, Sunday and Monday, close Tuesday through Saturday, nine AM, if I have any. It may be closed twelve to one PM for lunch, and our break hours, changes, uh, as of eight seventeen twenty-four. Everything else is the same. Any discussion on that, and one, uh, this tomorrow, or whoever's out there, this, this vast crowd out here. If not, we have a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, look through ordinance twenty, twenty-four, dash zero four, landfill hours of operation.
And councilman Glass has made a motion, is there a second?
My second.
Lynn has made a second, all the players say aye?
Aye.
All opposed the same, passes the motion. Number sixteen, discuss, consider, take action, ordinance. Number twenty, twenty-four, dash zero five, dog pound fees will repeat, offenders, I've got that on page ninety-four, ninety-five. I'm.
I know, I will add that next time, we want to.
Repeat, offending, impounding, and that one should be submitted to the rolling lease, maybe local heading, order twenty-two point one one zero zero license and fee. These will roll with the owner as the repeat offender, not the animal. The third offense, the owner will be issued a citation for public nuisance, as defined in article two point one zero one of this ordinance. After the fourth offense, the animal will not be returned to the owner, as set as congruent with the surrender fee, I guess that makes a sign. Uh, I, I'm gonna, since that's a problem, it's the same animals.
Yeah, I don't, I had that challenge, they have the same one over and over and over again, there's, interesting, unique situation, I've got a piece of counter, and the government's gonna give a, a small T, and no people count, and like, the piece is all, uh, along.
Incense, but do the right. Okay, any discussion on the end?
I, I, I had a small discussion with Chad the other day, uh. I don't, the first offense of ten dollars is fine, the second offense is fine, thirty dollars. But I think the third offense needs to go to, I would say, a hundred and fifty bucks. And if you don't pay that, then the, a lot of time, I guess they have like a lot, like to do with the other.
You're supposed to get, pay it before you get your animal.
Right, pay it before you get your animal out, uh, and then the fourth offense, my suggestion is two hundred dollars, and then I'll get the animal back. If they don't pay that. I just think those are too cheap, right?
And usually, they, they, day here for dogs, they'll do day here.
Yeah. Yeah, for a weekend, you know, somebody can go out of town, but, you know, I can pay the dog, I can pay fifty bucks for my third offense, keep my dog for a weekend while I'm gone, like, that's cheaper than, go get it for you. Uh, that's my, that's my suggestion, the challenge is to raise the third and the fourth offenses up tremendously.
People are, I get, you know, I don't have a pet, you know, but I know people that they love their animals, and. Like I say, the second or third offense, you think, you know, well, you think they need to get them, but at the same time, I'm, I'm a little cautious, because they will lose their money, you know. And then just got in the office, and you want to be nice to people and understand their situation, but, uh. Maybe we can try this as any words, I, I get your point, you know, that.
So you're saying, like, with the fines, two hundred dollars, and they, they can give your animal back, but. Oh, well, I'm gonna give it, ten dollars up there, the surrender fee.
Oh, yeah, the surrender.
No, uh, fourth offense, I'm rather.
This is, this is, this is.
And we don't issue a citation on the court home, because they're surrendering.
Oh, okay.
But they have to pay the learner participating with the time.
If it's a surrender, surrender fee's two hundred dollars, people just, that's a problem. They're just working in, is what I'm trying to say, for two hundred dollars, for a hundred, they buy.
It's actually a pretty decent success with the surrender fee, I mean, I'm kind of shocked with the people paying it, I think if you bought it at two, they would. Now, whether or not you want to make the offense a different deal, that's fine, but we have had people say, and it's usually after their dogs get out two or three times, and they're like, I shouldn't do it. If it's the fans, don't have the money, and they pay a hundred dollars surrender. Then we have other people who use, um, dog daycare, and we're picking up their dogs six, seven, eight times, ten times a year, and if the dog doesn't get it on Friday, they don't. And then Rick has to work all weekend long, and that's OT, and time out of his pocket, because they just don't want to come to their dog.
Maybe this is shelter fee of three dollars a day, sometimes.
Maybe a weekend shelter fee versus a weekday shelter fee. It won't cover your OT.
We used to, daycare or child, I don't know if they taught it now, but if you are a minute late, $10 per minute. So I would say so much more an hour. I would say $10 or whatever. I would, would be how much? $3, $3 per day?
That would be.
I'd say. I was disgusted.
No, okay, so these, these fees stack on each other when you come get your dog. Okay, so your dog brought out being impounded, it's $10. Then we have it for two days, it's $6 plus the $10. Then you couldn't prove your vaccination, now it's $46 because we had to get vaccinated. So that's to actually get your dog out of the pound, unless you had your vaccination taken, then it would just take it how many days in the impound. So I just want you to go through the steps. Yeah, and then if you came to adopt it, I believe that adoption fee is by itself. I don't believe you pay the days and the spend in the pound. We adopted one, we didn't pay that. So it's just the $35, but if they can't prove the dog's vaccination, you can pay the $30 for the vaccination. So it could be $65.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're still that. Thirteen, say, $10 for the first day. It's a weekend, it's only going to cost you $16 to get your dog out. The shelter fee, they should be more, I would think. Because you get a dog there a week out. I don't, I don't know what he makes for working on weekends, but you see what I'm saying?
It's old time.
Right, so I'm saying these people let their dogs out like she's saying, it's a weekend, and then I'm probably thirty, I would be doing $50 today, $20 today, I don't know. I mean, if you love your animal, that's your thing. I love your dog.
If you love it, yeah, love it, you know, that much, you love it immediately.
Exactly.
And then you want to take a legal bill?
I just think the day to day shelter fee should be more.
During the weekend, you do?
Just, are you talking boots?
Yeah, but I still think it should be more $3 a day.
Just like across the board, say, five or six dollars a day.
Yeah.
That's a good example. Dog, take care of my dog.
I was like.
If you kill a dog, you haven't had all the dogs yet, have the, all that's happened, you kill them. I would find out because I know this last year, we killed later. They're going to be gone one week, and I think they said like $200.
Do you think that happens? Do you think people intentionally, will they bring their dog down for a weekend?
Yeah, well, if we can get them out, they won't come to you on Monday. So if they get them up on Friday, he just knows, they're sad, he's like, you're not getting back on Monday.
It gives them a break from that.
Well, let's say they're saying, well, if they get some water, that they don't have to do that. It's pretty shallow.
Someone like to propose a motion, is it? Try something else. All right.
They consider a motion.
Okay. Oh.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024 oh five dog pound fees for repeat offenders and shelter impound and shelter process. First offense, $10, second offense, $30. Third offense, $100. And the fourth offense, $150 when you lose your dog. And shelter fee is $15 per day from $3.
We got it more.
Seven days a week.
All right.
No, no, every day is a certain, is a certain.
Just for clarification, on that fourth offense, you can get your animal back and pay $150, so we're not going to call this surrender fee. So then I'm going to come up here and that departed animal will remove after the fourth offense, the animal will not be returned to the court. That will be removed.
Is the surrender fee going to be $100 a week there?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a good idea because you don't want to keep people from surrendering. It continues to be a problem.
It covers the continuation.
Y'all getting that?
I'll say it.
Got a second? Councilman Lynn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Passes motion.
Watch my ball.
Bring your check, buddy.
You know, for those of us that lock their dogs for a while, they go to one of these booths, and they need to get their over stolen. So to me, I'd gladly give you $40, but I'd get my dog back.
My dog wasn't cheap, so I don't, I'm on pay.
Number seventeen, we don't have anything on the payment limit, is that right? Number fourteen. Number eighteen.
Wait a second, that's our mayor. Can we, can we kind of talk about that?
Sure, you bet.
When we, when we talked about that, if we put price on that, we did not. Okay, I'll just make sure what we want, don't do high, we did put a bottom on that, if we needed to drop that.
And we, uh, Dr. Breger has been working to get some put up and I ordered that, uh, today. I think I have a confirmation on it. So there will be a report that, that puts on and has all the property details on it, it's available or not. This is to call the city, and then we're working on Facebook and on our business.
Okay, I just, I just didn't make sure we had the price on it. It was too high.
Okay. Trying to get somebody to go with it. Uh, not asking, you know, some inquiries, just, they're kind of like, let's do that. Uh, number eighteen, discuss and consider take action in purchase of a lease. Excuse me. Number nineteen, discuss and consider take action in lease agreement for the remote work center, page one twenty-six. And I've read through that, it's, like I said, page one twenty-six. Kind of spells out the the, uh, rules and regulations for being up there. Can't sublease it, I'm just hitting with some high points. Hours, keypad operation injury, what the city provides, that kind of thing. Uh, anybody have any questions over there?
I, I just wanted to jump on to you, so, uh, EB Electric Security, uh, I've been here the last two days, and they are, uh, almost finished with installing the keypad entry system. We can have the 200 completely, that means you get 200 different numbers. And that way, Lauren can run that from her computer, and somebody comes in, they don't pay the rent, she just takes out their number, and then they're, they're, they're in the computer, so that'll eliminate a lot of that. But I do that, we sit right, put the camera in there, uh, I'm going to go tonight too, and I somebody had been in there, another with a mess up, randomized, with the lights are not always on, and all the doors, you know, the other door were open, and so I, I checked every single door, window, I don't have a key in it. Because really, I have only key, uh, so anyway, uh, I think we need that security there to, I'll just watch that. There is a lot of technology in there, I might just.
And you have a question? So the, the little offices, are they not going to pay higher rent for the inside of the office?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't say.
It's not originally in here, so, but wait, it is.
Pretty likely it's on or on.
So, I, and I, it's not even, we didn't collaborate very well on this lot, because I was trying to get it done, and I should, I should have bought him his, if I had him his. Uh, but, uh, yes, so, um, we can easily add in here uh, the two other offices that are wired up where you go. One is huge on the conference room, and the other has a private bathroom. So they definitely should be more than the $200 plan. Um, and so in the motion, we'll, go ahead and set a price for those two, so that we'll know exactly what you want them to be for month, and I'll add in the contract. I mean, you could.
I'm like.
Okay. I was going to say, when we were talking with one incident today, uh, they said, wow, I wish we had known about this, it would have been cheaper to rent it from you guys and have to build all these offices we built out on site. So, rude thought, I would have never thought of that, but it does give us opportunity maybe in the future as other things come on, and now they know about it, oh, I don't know about this.
I like the fact that you said, no, living in the cube, that's.
Where you have your.
Living in those cubes. You know how people live, they live in storage units sometimes.
I was going to say, I heard that this was.
It's an obvious one, uh, where, where did that $200 come from?
That was just our original discussion. We don't really have any super great idea what utilities are going to be. And there's no market, right? So if we had, at the top, we were doing 20 cubicles, so $200, 20 cubicles is what, $4,000 or something like that. So our, our internet connection is 250. So that means that would just $3,900 for utilities. Or we might miss all of that capital, just felt that a decent jumping point until they get people in there using it, we really just won't know what we're doing. And it, and it may need to increase, and in that thing, we may, may need to say that contracts can be renegotiated at any time based off of, you know, something like that.
And you, or we get a certain period of time?
Yeah, we can do it annually, we say the first of the year, uh, contracts can be renegotiated, or, you know, wherever you want to put it. And that might give us some, some movement in there. Uh, I did talk to IT, uh, we're going to have wireless, we don't have wireless in there right now, because we didn't want to pay for anything, but we weren't using it. So because we're not going to open, the wireless is going to be installed, that's an extra $3,000. And then we'll do maintenance, IT sort of stuff, so there's going to be some costing that. So that $38, $37.50 will help cover those, I have to call. Um, and then my right, we get it, Harris is terminated, been spraying it over there, they've been taking good care of it.
Is there a BTA open?
The sign got ordered, the same account that ever signed got ordered, so, um.
If you do, tomorrow, the security.
If we have the security, it's coming out. And, well, the doors are done.
The doors aren't open until maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, so we need to set a, probably a grand over the day. Um, and work, work with the chamber, it's, people are sitting out of it, we need to do any, um, I need a, there are aspects, workforce commission that we're ready to go to, like, in these public, uh, PSAs, and, uh.
So they're not open house, or it's not a hundred grand?
Yes, do a grand over, you know, house, something on during the day, where people can come and look at it. Um, you know, we need to call, we need to be smart about it, we need to call, we need to call channel six, we need to tell them to come over here and look at it, because there's still a door in Wichita that's so, you know, they might, we might actually have people drive from Wichita if they need an office, because they can't find one, $200.
So you try to get it every day, we could be open.
I would sure also, I think it's fair to that. I'm afraid of y'all, I'm excited, it's a awesome opportunity. Would probably warn for, for this, uh, idea, so. Lauren, what did you say about it again? You know, I'm thrilled to have Lauren come up with this idea, and I, I think it is big, and even, um, organizations say they've got something like this, so, and I'm hoping it's a success, I think they worked really hard to clean it up and make it a really, really nice facility. So I think it could be real substantial for Seaborn and, uh, a model for other communities.
Councilman Lynn, did you buy a purse, right again?
That, that sign that you just ordered, is it, like, on the sign, or just?
No, it's actually.
Okay, but I mean, it, it will notify people what that actually is from now on out?
Yes, it's in the office remote work center. And then it says, contact City Hall, our number for tours. So it's pretty straightforward. We're putting all the doors inside of the building, that's where we're going, that's where the digital door is, and people have to park on it.
Councilman, everything you have, actually, would like.
Um, yeah. So I make a motion that we, uh, accept this agreement, this list agreement for the, uh, offices. And put on, the $200 per, uh, cubicle would make it $300 alone for the offices, the two code offices. And then also to make it work at every year, we have a chance to renegotiate the contract.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? All right, uh, we're, the section, session part is?
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, ladies.
They're not going to put us in, oh, second, they're going to go around, and I mean, uh, this is like, this is more than second.
I'm going to, um, I'm going to.
Yeah.
I was going to, I'm casting.